Second, 2018 to order. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is public appearances, and this is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Anybody?
I don't have anybody registered.
Okay. All right. Item five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting from March 19th. Any corrections?
Under seven three, community development authority, the third line from the bottom of that section, it says, "To approve moving the funds," I think I should say, "to approve moving the funds for annexation in the urban service area amendment that were budgeted for TIT-10."
Okay. Sounds right. Anybody?
I think it's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes then with that correction?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the minutes with the correction that Mick made. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Aye. Oh, yes, right. Okay. One abstention. Motion passes. Number six, presentations to the board, a presentation by A and M management regarding their purchase of the unbuilt remainder of the Corey Ridge subdivision and their intent to complete the build out of the subdivision. This is just a presentation, no action tonight. Those folks here, if you want to come up to the table, please. You can, if you have any documents, you can put them under that little camera thing and they'll come up on the TV back there. There we go.
So this is a simple map, so you guys can see where it's at. So, my name's Nate Snyder. I own a house in the village, lived here for a little over 10 years. Kind of new to the whole development process, but I've been talking to Aaron Ruth quite a bit and walking through the process. And everything seems to be moving forward with it and all the approvals were done quite a few years ago on a lot of this stuff. So it's a matter of just finalizing a lot of the processes. So in regards to it, kind of our plans would be to start and do the first phase down kind of like on this end, and then move across it and do the second phase, and then this area here would be the third phase, and then the fourth phase over here where a lot of the gravel is. And I'm sure everybody's heard a lot of about the gravel piles, it sounds like, over the years. The reasons for, I guess, starting that or doing it in that order is to actually be able to use that product onsite rather than haul it all off and then haul it back and try to burn a bunch of extra fuel and time for no reason. So that's kind of the process behind it. I don't know, is there any questions or is there anything else you guys?
There was a staff memo from Aaron. Aaron's absent excuse tonight on vacation. Just an overview, that the original developer agreement was with Bill Paulson, and that was in 2002. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Lee, other than just the developer agreement needs to be updated before they can move forward.
All right. Just for point of reference for people that are on TV, north is up on that map, is that?
Uh, well, you're going to be looking at like the QuickTrip and like the industrial park is over in this backside here.
Yes.
So I think the new steel building just went in like right back in here.
Okay. All right. Mick?
I had a question from one of our residents about whether there would be any blasting that would occur out there. There were some concerns, I guess, about the soils or there might be underlying limestone or rock that you would remove.
Um, so there will be. We're going to try to limit it as much as possible. So it'll definitely have to be hammered or removed, the same as probably their house that went in was done the same way. So until we get into more of it, don't exactly know how much, but there won't be a whole lot in this area. It's more like up into here where you're going to get into possibility of some of that. But there will be a lot of seismographing and stuff like that set up along the houses. And if that is to ever take place, the, you know, that stuff will be put in place to ensure that none of it affects the houses or any of that stuff, so.
So is that, is that in your final phase where you think that would occur? Which phase?
Yeah, that'd be more like the fourth phase, yep. And if it does, it's really only going to be like trench blasting mainly, just where the sewer and water and utilities need to go. There shouldn't be a possibility, I guess, maybe some in here, but at this point, we're hoping that we can hammer most of it with an excavator instead of having to blast, so.
I just have a question too. JJ, how do you, how do you address those sorts of issues when someone comes in and they need to blast? Is there a process you go through with them with that respect or?
Typically, I believe Mr. Maloney and I talked about this a few years ago in this spot here. I think all the concerns were addressed over a decade ago originally. Basically, my biggest concern would be municipal wells nearby and we're far enough away. But I'll, I'll probably touch base again with Mike and make sure we're still good, but it's typically not that big of a concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I guess, what do you anticipate, you know, timeline for this? I'm sure you got something sketched out and it's obviously going to depend on how the economy goes and all that.
Yeah, so I mean, as fast as possible as a, a new developer into the game, if, as fast as I can get rid of those lots, the better off I'm going to be. So we kind of predict that you should be able to sell on one phase per year. So, you know, hoping for four years.
How many new homes in each phase?
Uh, roughly 20. You know, it varies a little bit, but.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. I know that's, I mean, I've been on the board a long time since 2005 and this was even before.
Right.
It's been there a while like that.
Yeah, yeah. It's been sitting vacant and it sounds like everybody wants to get it cleaned up and I'm the lucky, lucky one that gets to deal with it.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. New business. Item seven, discuss and consider new operators license for license from here July 2017 to June 2018 for Lita Kraft, Tiffany Myers, and Taylor Myers. Any issues with these folks, do you?
Nope.
Okay. If not, I'll make a motion to approve for all three, Lita Kraft, Tiffany Myers, and Taylor Myers. Okay. Motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Seven B, annual report of building permits. I'm guessing that's you, Tom.
Tom Beacon, building inspector. Each year we submit an annual report of the activities as far as permits, projects, what happened as far as miscellaneous permits, commercial permits, demolition permits in the houses. So we put it all together and show you just exactly what was out there in the annual year 2017.
This is for calendar year 2017, the calendar year to December?
And actually, the, the ordinance, you know, for whatever reason, says to go Feb., I think it's through February, which we could certainly do, but administratively, and I think for Tom, it's easier to do it calendar year. So if you guys, we could update the ordinance to show that, but it's just a minor change. The board's okay with that. I don't know, you know, unless, unless you guys would like to do an ordinance change to reflect that. Otherwise, we can just continue doing it.
I guess to me, it makes most sense to continue with the calendar year thing if that works for everybody. It is a little easier to keep track of.
I think the cardinal ordinance though is one March year, the end of February.
Yeah, so we'd have to change the ordinance maybe to do that. All right.
So I guess, so you'd like to change the ordinance then?
Future agenda item?
Yeah, just for future agenda item, we'll change the calendar year, I think, if that makes sense to everybody. Any other questions for Tom or anything?
I have a question. It's probably people or Matt. So my understanding from reading what's in the packet, we do not have a contract in place with building inspectors?
Correct.
And then this is one really for you, Lee. It's, to me, it's, I would propose we would want to do that for no other reason than just the insurance coverage and there's no additional insured. There's, it looks like it's not a real prudent thing for us to be going forward without.
Years, or, we had, we had contracts with all of the inspectors. And then another award came along and said, we were renewing them, and they said, why do we, you know, we don't need this. And they decided, and the direction was not to have them anymore. I agree with you. I think it makes a lot of sense.
And typically, we just pay you per inspection. Is that how we?
Right.
Okay. And that would still be incorporated into the contract then, haven't we?
Yeah, yeah. And things like appointment of the people that Tom has worked for him.
Sure.
Okay.
And then any sort of like paperwork or final inspection maybe gets filed somewhere, and I don't know if that's.
Yeah, what do you normally do, Tom? I mean, as far as a permit, does the copy come here too, or how does that?
Yeah, every, Lisa gets a copy of everything. Everything gets put in a particular file that it belongs, addresses and stuff like that.
And as, as far as paper files, I don't know if it can, does it have to be paper? It can be electronic? Does it matter? I mean, is it what's easier? I guess it doesn't matter as long as it's eventually electronic, right?
Well, they were, in fact, I think what a lot of people like to do, Lisa can know this too, probably more than. But a lot of people like to come in and look at a file, just open it up.
Okay.
I mean, and I'm sure it's electronically on there too.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Tom or?
Tom, how, how are the, the charges calculated again in terms of what gets charged to the company or the individual that asks you for an inspection? Because I would make that as part of the contract then.
Yeah, there's a, there's a regular schedule that's in the office.
Okay.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Tom.
So the direction is to come up with an independent contract or agreement for, for the building inspector?
Right. For Beacon Inspection Services with LLC or whatever it is. Yeah.
Right.
Do we have any other ones that we need to consider too?
Well, there are three other inspectors that are appointed by Tom, Jason Gross, Jerry Hahn, and Tim Lamb. And that was in, that was in the memo. And we could certainly, we used to have these agreements with everybody, primarily for the insurance.
But these are not your employees, they're additional subcontractors, is that right?
Right.
So I mean, we could do the same thing, I guess, for them as well. Okay.
Mick?
Yeah, my concern really is just the potential liability for the, for the village.
Yep.
Making sure they're probably addressed.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just one other comment is, you know, as we're issuing permits for like fences or whatever, maybe, I think, it started on the planning commission when I brought this up, that we don't have all the covenants for all the neighborhood associations.
Oh, yeah.
So if we're charging people, say $50 to put in a fence for a permit, but then the individual finds out it's not part of the neighborhood association or the covenants.
Or does it?
Do they get reimbursed for $50 or, I mean, what part of, what, what part of role does the village have in that?
I think the village stays out of, I think the village stays out of the covenants and restrictions and subdivisions. Unless there's an architectural control committee, then they have to get an okay from them before they can go ahead and come down here.
And if there's not a committee and we issue a permit, but what if a neighbor says, I mean, that, that ran into the planning commission about a year, year and a half ago, a neighbor was going to take him into litigation and probably win based on.
Because a lot of covenants from 15, 20 years ago. A lot of homeowners associations kind of go by the wayside after a while and then, I don't know, do we have a copy of restrictions and covenants then? Or how does that?
It gets filed when the plan gets filed.
Okay.
But generally what happens, and I, it, it happens everywhere, not just here, is, Lee would know probably better, but if you get a packet of covenants and restrictions, whether it's from our municipality, a different municipality, basically, it's going to be the same packet, okay? No old buildings, no fences, no satellite issues, stuff like that. And then drive through there 10 or so years later.
Exactly.
The old buildings, fences, satellite issues and so on. And it's been taken to court, the fence part, and the people that had covenants and restrictions lost. In other words, saying the developers, the whatever, said, was told, you cannot do that. You can tell somebody, you have to have all cedar fences, but you can't just tell them they cannot have a fence.
Okay. Okay.
I think the issue you run into is you really never know what covenants are applying because the developer could amend the covenants after the developer sold three or four, 10 lots, and you still have 100 of them left. So you have some that are under one section of, I mean, one, you have one set of covenants under another set because of amendments. I just don't see how the village really can ever get involved in that unless you, you want to get a title report on every single, you know, lot.
There's an enforceability issue.
And the state administrator association, you can ask questions on there and then get feedback from others. And there was someone, a new administrator a couple of years ago that asked this question. And the responses from just about every community was that we, it's a private matter, we don't get involved. And the only ones that did said, stay away, basically. So that was the extent of.
Lisa, does, don't our forums remind people that they need to check?
Yes.
To see if there are.
Yes.
Covenants restrictions.
And I mean, if, if we go through and we know that there's something, we'll, we'll say, well, you really should check with your neighborhood association or your developer to see if you have covenants. And if they were, if they paid the fee and then they, they can't get it for whatever reason, we do refund that.
Especially if it's an Andrew Humbert subdivision because he's pretty consistent on his. So we can at least tell them, you still want to check, but we're pretty sure this is the case.
All right. Moving on. Next item, discuss and consider approval of developer agreement with JSB Enterprises, James Bugs. Jimmy Johns.
This is a transaction that's been going on for a period of time in the Commerce Park. While there is a developer agreement, we're not actually making any payments. He's not, we, we did a developer agreement simply because this is taking place in TIF, TIF 5, but he's not receiving any TIF assistance. So this was pretty bare bones and pretty straightforward. And then we have, as we do in each time that there's a transaction involving the village, we do a resolution that authorizes staff to take all required action to sell the property. And there's a durable power of attorney, real estate, allowing Matt to sign any documentation that's required by the title conference. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lee? Anything, Matt, do you have to add to this or?
Just that, the, the main provision in the developer agreement is that they essentially have to complete the project by the end of the year, or the builder would have the option to buy back next year if they didn't. So that's the, that's the main thing that's in there.
Okay. Any comments? If not, I will make a motion to approve the developer agreement with JSB Enterprises.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the developer agreement with JSB Enterprises, AKA Jimmy Johns. Any other discussion? If not.
Should we view the resolution and the power of attorney? Are we going to do separate motions?
We're going to do, I think we'll do separate motions on that, yeah.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item B is discuss and consider resolution 2018-02, resolution authorizing staff to take all required action regarding sale of lot two CSM 12857 to end closing transactions with JSB Enterprises, AKA James Bugs and Jimmy Johns. Anything?
Well, we make sure in the power of attorney that it's limited to this transaction, so Matt's not outselling the entire village, so. Keep it, keep an eye on him.
Any questions, Tom, concerns? Somebody want to make a motion on this one?
I have a motion if we approve the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution 2018 dash zero two for lot two CSM for JSB Enterprises. Any other discussion?
With the understanding that the resolution incorporates the power of attorney.
Okay. And motion and second, okay with that? Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Moving right along, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. First, we have the Ad hoc Glacial Drummond Bike Path Committee, which is our new committee.
Brand new. So we met on Tuesday, March 20th as a committee for the first time. Spent the majority of our time discussing the various options for the potential bike path through the village. Again, this is off into probably 2020 before anything really happens. But we do need to get everything straightened out on our end, be ready for it. That's the need for this committee. So came down to probably a couple of different options for the path itself. And just, there are just two variations there. Both of them would run through, run along Vilas and the Park Ridge development there, and then cross Vilas into Bachan Park, make its way through Bachan Park, and then back onto Clark Street. And then there are a couple of different options there as far as consideration. What we're going to do next time we meet on April 17th is actually go out and take a look at that, do a little field trip as, as a committee. We also considered a number of things from the engineering and staff feedback on this discussion. So it's actually fairly robust as far as consideration there. Anything else?
Well, just that we're busy applying for, well, not we, but JJ and Aaron is busy applying for grants.
Tap grants.
DNR, that kind of thing. So there, where he's looking to maximize or minimize our payment in the process to, which is great. He's all on top of it. He's, he's applied with preliminary routes, but we'll amend those routes as we get closer. Kind of exciting. Other than that, perfect. And of course, we elected John as chairman of the committee.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Pure Court Steering Committee.
We met on the 21st of March and I was, I got the honor of being the secretary now. So I have all the notes here. There were just a couple of things that I should point out. Jay Kiefer from Briar Patch updated us with the fact that there are more referrals this year so far compared to previous years. Quote, quote escalating for the first three months, which is good, I guess, that they're using the pure court system more. And the Briar Patch has had written a grant and they did receive the grant money to bring in a restoration justice coordinator. And then that person will be visiting Cottage Grove in the near future just to look at how the pure court system is working for our community. We did some discussion about Monona Grove High School. They've expressed the interest in being part of the pure court, but, you know, where that funding comes from for that.
Yes. So Monona has their own pure court, I'm guessing, and?
Actually, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's ironic because that's where it started.
Yeah, is it?
Randy Paul started it, yeah.
Yeah, so. But that is something that they're interested in, you know, but it would have to be, somehow they would have to fund it.
Yeah.
Fund it as a village.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Joint Fire Department Committee.
We met last Monday, the 26th. First topic was revisions to the agreement for fire protection services. There was some confusion as to where that sat. And I think between Lee, I contacted Lee and he said, actually, the town attorney has it. We're good with the current revisions. So I think we're ready to execute. I don't know what.
And that's due to the chief tonight too, so you should be good to go.
Okay. And then the next topic, they're talking about updating the computer network infrastructure primarily for wifi in the bay. Looking for booster, blinder, you know, increased router, potential donor that they were going to reach out to because they also need some kind of activity down in emergency government wing of the building. So that's tabled until we're able to potentially get a donor for assistance in some of that. Next, we talked about the whole I-3990 reconstruction zones. It's going to be, you know, heading north. They took lessons learned from Rock County, who actually had it the last couple of years. And we did, we did vote on to replace light bar and sirens. It's actually on the rush truck, which is a town-owned vehicle, but it's all about officer safety, actually, to be able to get onsite. Just because they're shifting lanes, you just can't take the big trucks on there. And Chief, correct me if I'm misinterpreting this, but, so it was about $2,000 from the village and $2,000 from the town. But I just wanted to make the board aware that it was voted on and it is a town-owned vehicle.
Okay.
But it, you know, it basically comes down to officer safety at that point.
One thing too on the cost, we are, so we did put our new air packs and cascade system in the service, which we had ordered, I think, most of our wear out. We've got our old compressor system, which is still operable. It just wasn't enough capacity for our new packs and things. So the hope is to actually sell some of that equipment. We don't know what we'll get from that. But the hope is to sell that to offset some of the cost. If we get lucky enough, hopefully, we'll be trying to solicit that, to raise those funds to offset penalties.
The cascade system is what you're referring to refilling tanks with, the system you're referring?
Correct.
All right.
All right. AFG grant, there's no news, so that was tabled. It was discussed what was done for Chief Boxrucker, and there was a plaque made from the department as well as a gift card. And it was just a question for the village board if we wanted to make any recognition for Bruce. 32 years in the forest, 24 as chief. The trouble is just getting up to, come to get recognized because it's not his way of doing business, but something that we can certainly consider as a village board. And we talked about the old air packs and compressors, potentially selling those to recoup some of the funds that previously were mentioned. And the last item, there was a light pole that was erroneously struck over clearing some snow last winter. $2,000 to fix, but we're also, that was tabled as we attempt to get more bids. Also part of that discussion is a new parking lot at about $68,000, I think is budgeted. And right now discussions are, there's about $10,000 less if we actually remove the blacktop. So at some point, we might talk to some people about removing the blacktop and saving $10,000.
When that parking lot was originally discussed, did they talk about moving the lighting over onto the building just to get rid of the pole to that?
The discussion is to move the two light poles that are in the center, to move them on the north side of the lot.
Okay.
And then to have lights on the building itself as well.
Just be a lot easier for.
There wouldn't be anything in the center. But it took 22 years to start, so.
That's all I have. All right. Thanks, John. All right. Law enforcement committee. I know James told me we did not have a quorum, but there is a discussion item here. James told me we did not have a quorum, but there is a discussion item here, and this had been brought up previously, and I'll let Chief Labor talk about it as well, but it's a recommendation regarding proposed ban on the sale of fireworks in the village.
Right. This is, other than the frequent traffic complaints, this is the one we get the second most complaints about, but the most passionate complaints. And it has to do with fireworks going off the week before the Fourth of July, the week after, and its effect on people and animals. And it's also a safety hazard. We've actually gotten pictures from residents that have had holes burned in their asphalt shingled roofs from fireworks being lit off by their friendly neighbors. And part of the problem is, when we go out there and then try to enforce this, people are confused and/or use this as an excuse that we have fireworks for sale right here on West Cottage Grove Road, Main Street, whatever. And why do you allow these illegal fireworks to be sold here if we can't use them here in the village? So, this is my pitch to the board to have this taken care of, and at least get rid of this part of the confusion that some residents are experiencing, and make it part of our ordinance not to allow the sale of fireworks within the village limits. Go ahead, Jack.
My understanding of the law, is it possession already illegal, but it's a sale is the issue? Or how do you enforce?
It's very confusing, but basically, you need a permit. And are you guys cornelier? No, or they're not here?
Yes, I am here.
You are, okay. We did promise them to be able to speak on the topic also, but...
You did promise me that I was gonna be acknowledged in this meeting, so.
Yeah, if you'd like to speak, if you could just come up here and just identify yourself, because the cameras are up there, and feel free to talk to us here.
How's it going, guys?
Good.
So, I do own cornelier fireworks of Madison or whatever, so the fireworks stand here in Cottage Grove. We do, to your perception, is, Wisconsin is funny with their laws. You can sell it. You can't light it. So, we try to presume everybody with safety of fireworks. We try to, when they buy it, they know that they gotta go to our shooting site. The Madison Speedway in the, in Wisconsin, so they strictly sign a piece of paper stating that they're going to our designated shooting site to light those fireworks. If they don't light those fireworks, they are permitted to deal with the law enforcement of certain townships, which a lot of, I mean, fireworks, you put in anybody's hands, they're gonna be stupid, which I get that. But we wanna try to permit a safety basis, where we're gonna allow them to do the fireworks safely, do it the right way, and not light them off in the parking lot of Black Bear, or light them off anywhere. So, I mean, there's stuff that, as us, for a company, we've done in the previous past to set up signs, and set up warnings, and set up different things in our area. So, when they buy those, they make sure that they take them directly out of the city, out of the state, or out of, because technically, you're supposed to take them out of the state or to a place where they have a permit to light them off. If you don't have a permit to light them off, you can't light them off. So, it's just like going to buy a firearm. You're buying it, but you can't light it off in the city limits, so you're taking it to the right place to light it off. So, as long as we educate all of our consumers, or if I do anything more to educate my consumers when they're buying them, and reiterate that, I could see that a way to help everything out. But I don't wanna see the sale of fireworks going away in Cottage Grove, just due to traffic. I mean, I don't know if you guys have traffic concerns or whatever, but it does bring a lot of people. It does bring business to the areas. Dominic at Black Bear loves having that there for ten days. It brings him people. It brings people to the area. People spend money there, eat, whatever they're gonna do, and then leave. But, I mean, if, there's things that we can do. And I mean, if you guys want to put a little bit more stricter system on there, lighting them off, I don't think you guys do permits for anybody to light anything off. So, they're already in a...
If we did, it would be just for the fire department if they...
Right. So, then, I mean, that already gives them an idea that they can't light them off. So, I mean, I can make sure I have somebody in place that says that if you're signing this agreement, you're taking out of the city limits, or you're gonna go to our designated shooting site, which, our designated shooting site's not far away from here. It's twenty minutes, the Madison Speedway. So, I mean, it's on the Fourth of July, Labor Day. It's from six to nine. So, I mean, it gives them a place to actually light them off legally, instead of just lighting them off in their backyard.
Is that the only place, or closest place? I mean, I don't know if there are.
They, that is the closest one we have in place now. But if you guys require something in this area, that's something that we could work out. I mean, it is a little bit harder for me to put that in place, but we could find another designated area in this county or in this area, which is ten miles away, or something like that. We could talk about that potentially, yes.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we do the one in Madison. We've had the one in Columbus. We've had one in La Crosse. My family's done this since the seventies, so we've had them all over the state, which is a lot of manpower and a lot of people to justify keeping it clean and keeping it to the point. But there's no, I've never had an issue with opening another one. It's just finding the location, finding the people that are willing to run it. But it's not unheard of, I guess.
What do other communities do as far as this type of sale, and then you have to go somewhere? I mean, is it all different from one to the other?
So, we could put it in this perspective. I own a fireworks store in Janesville, which is the town of Harmony. Janesville does not allow a firework, a spinner, a thing that goes in the air. But Harmony is right outside of Janesville, which is Cottage Grove. I don't know what are the other surroundings, but just like N, obviously. You go right outside the city, they open a giant fireworks store, and now they're going one mile outside of the city to buy twice as much. It's not just limited to a ten-day period. It's a three hundred and sixty-five day period. So, I mean, other towns, I mean, if you follow the state law, it kinda, you do it how we do it. We send people out, try to get everybody away from the city to light it off legally. Others, I mean, there's, big cities do ban it. I mean, there is that option, but I wouldn't love that option, obviously. I mean, there's many options, obviously.
Any questions?
Of this form you're having people sign, is that something that's mandated by the state, by the state statute, or is that something you're doing just because?
So, the state, we have had lobbyists for the state for many years. We have brought it into place for the state. We have got sued by many townships or many people, but we bring it to the state, and it always gets bypassed. It is not something mandated by the state, but it's something that we put into place for the Wisconsin Fire Technical Safety Association, which every fireworks company in the state of Wisconsin is able to join that association, just like the labor's forum, just like, it's another formation, which it does hold up in court. It does hold up in a lot of places, because it's giving them a place to light them off. Technically, it's not, it's legal to buy it, but you can transport only X amount of pounds to X point A or point B, where you have a license for it, and then you gotta shoot it. Or you gotta store it in a specific spot.
I have a question for Matt. Do we, how do we handle that now? Is it a permitting process for someone to, does someone need to get a permit of some sort to sell fireworks within the village?
Not if it's less than ten days. If it's over ten days, there's, there's a permit for a temporary use.
Maybe this is a question for Lee. Is this something that we could regulate if we so desired? For example, let's say that if someone's gonna sell fireworks within the city, the village, they'd have to get a permit. Permit would require that a specific type form be provided and signed?
Yeah, I mean, if the, if some municipalities are not along with them at all, I think that, and if you look at one sixty-seven...
Dash ten?
Five, that deals with local regulation. I mean, it does say that you can prohibit the sale, possession or use as defined by ordinance, or regulate the sale, possession or use as defined by ordinance.
But you're not allowed to make the state statute. You can't make it less restrictive.
Right.
You can be more restrictive. You can't make it less restrictive.
Correct. Yep.
And when I'm looking at this, what's on the agenda, I think we're just discussing, we don't have the action on any things.
Yeah, I think Dan's looking for direction that the board's interested in seeing in ordinance to the effect of the police department recommendation.
Well, I'm doing anything else. My honor, just kinda help you guys out and make something. I mean, I can even come and help you guys make an ordinance, or have my family or something, give you guys some pointers, a way to point the direction. I just don't wanna see something completely payware.
I mean, I appreciate you coming this evening and talking to us about this. I wasn't aware of the form that you're talking about. I guess, Chief, I'm wondering if...
I think we dropped a form law to the chief at one point.
Just throwing it out there, something to think about. If we did put an ordinance in place that would require that anyone that's going to sell within the village would have to have a specific form that would be approved by the board, would that be something that you think would be helpful to you? Or do you still feel we should just have a, not allow it at all within the sole village? I think, no matter what we do, if we're selling it in the village, people are going to think they can light them off in the village, and they can't. If it explodes or goes up in the air, you can't do it. It's state statute. And I'm not saying put the fireworks company out of business. People can go a mile outside the village limits and buy them down the road if they'd like to, and we're not putting them out of business. We're just saying, right now, this is a fairly densely packed community, and when these fireworks go off, it causes a lot of havoc for our residents. But I think from your, you have a specific spot that you use every year.
Yeah.
So, from your standpoint, is there anywhere else you can go that's around here other than that spot?
I technically, I'm a pioneer, so I could look for something. But I would not like, Dominic's been a family friend and been a friend since I've known him. So, I like to use his particular spot, since it's, we have a good trusty basis, where I don't pay much, he don't pay much. So, it's kinda like a one hand washes the other aspect. But there is always things I could do, but I don't. I like the spot that I'm in, and obviously, it does well for me. It does well for Dominic. Dominic, that's been in business in the village at Cottage Grove for many years. So, that's kinda where I'd like to stay.
Chief, has there ever been any incidences of people getting hurt, or other than the burnt asphalt shingles and that, that you know of any?
Minor things that I know of. That's probably EMS or fire department type of, you've been here forever. I can't speak for EMS, but on the fire side, we've had small instances where brush fires are started or something along that lines. You know, if you get something that shoots into a lead pile or a brush, you can very easily start a fire. And we have had small instances, nothing that's really ever taken off, but potential's there.
It is there. I got three little kids, six, five, and four-year-olds, and they have been burned once or twice, but they're not losing a limb. I mean, I still have all my ten fingers, if that's good in the fireworks industry, so.
It's unfortunately hard to legislate common sense when people buy these things.
My dad does have half a thumb, if that justifies anything, but.
I've lived here for fifteen years, and I think you'd have to have the National Guard here to keep, to go after every person that's lighting these off.
That's the one thing about the fireworks industry. I mean, everybody's not doing, like, you're not gonna go outside today and light it off. I mean, it's all strategically in a week or two weeks. But, I mean, I have been in it since I was young. It's safety, safety, safety. Every time you go to, like, the hospital, they always wanna give you the safety ratings that you got burnt here, you got burnt here, you got burnt here, which safety, if we teach all of our kids safety and all of our grandkids safety, fireworks aren't gonna have too many of an issue unless you get other things mixed with it and people do stupid things, which, when they're buying a particular product right away, they're not being stupid. But when they take it to their party and show off, now, we try to, I mean, everybody does stupid things.
I'm curious, too, that, you know, you always have, I've been here a long time, too, and you always hear the people at, like, ten, eleven o'clock at night, and then they just start shooting stuff up. And I'm wondering how many of those complaints come in because it's just late and they're...
Well, people expect a lot of fireworks, you know, maybe the day before, the day of.
Yeah.
But it's the constant drone of these things for two weeks. And people will leave town to get away from the fireworks. And so, how long are they expected to stay away? Now, is this the answer, banning sale in the village? I don't know. I think it will help, though.
I mean, you guys could put a place, a system in place where you guys make, recent years, I've never filled out anything paperwork-wise or given you my insurance. I can fill out a, like, a temporary use permit, pay X amount of dollars to the city. So, that's one way. And then, I can give you a form of my two million dollar policy, five million dollar policy on the fireworks, so I can provide both of those statements. And I'll be, I'm only in town for ten days, which I live, I work, I do everything in town, so I'm not just in town for ten days. But, I mean, those things that we can put into place where you guys get an extra little money. I mean, the fire department, if they need a little donation this year, I can actually do that as well. I mean, there's something, there's put things in place that I could do as a company. This is solely, we're a big company, but this is solely my one spot, particularly just me, my kids.
I mean, the other side of the coin here is, with your business, having people sign a form, they know about it. If I go to another place to buy fireworks only three miles away from here, I doubt if I'm signing a form. And so...
They sign the form, or they just handed the form?
We make them sign the form. They give us their personal ID. We justify that as that. They're stating that they're going to our designated shooting site and light it off. If they do not, then it puts the justification on his hands, which I can see where he gets bombarded with calls at that time of the year. But it does take the cause out of our hands and puts it in municipalities' hands, I guess, you could say.
Any other thoughts, comments? I mean, so the next step for us would be, if we're going to do anything, it would be through an ordinance modification?
Yeah, that's...
But I think you just have to decide what direction you wanna go. I mean, it's, I don't wanna, I mean, this comes around every ten or fifteen years, is I think the second or third iteration. So, the board needs to say, this is what we wanna do, or this is what we want you to bring back, and, or do nothing.
I guess one of my thoughts was, we also have an election tomorrow, and, you know, maybe keep it on for a future agenda item for next month and talk about it more at that point. Is that something people would wanna do? I mean...
I agree. I think we need to have it, we need to have it as a decision item, so that, and try to get the word out to the public, so we can kind of hear what the public wants to do, and so on and so forth.
I mean, that's how I would be, also.
It would be nice to tell the public, so you can...
As long as the public gives you...
Yeah. Our agendas are put on our website, so...
Yeah. There's a reason I found this tonight.
You know, Chief, if I can ask, I understand you're getting a lot of calls, more than you get at any other time of the year. How many tickets are you writing for violation of fireworks?
I don't know the specific number. I'd have to look back in the statistics, but...
You could probably count it on two hands.
I mean, are we actually enforcing the laws that we have? I guess that's really what I'm asking. And being very diligent about it, because I think that may discourage some folks from letting them off, whether that's close to, whether he sells it here in the village, or someone drives up to Windsor and goes into the other place right along the interstate that has all kinds of stuff way bigger than he's selling.
Then I would...
They're gonna do it. They're gonna bring it home and do it, I think. I hate to say it, but...
They have discretion on whether they write a ticket or not, if they can identify who's doing it. But many times, when we roll up, people go in the house and they don't make it obvious they're the ones doing it.
And I can understand you use some discretion. It's kinda like parking tickets, and, you know, hey, you give someone a warning, but you're there the second, third, fourth time, you know, some calls at the same address, why?
The discretion's gone at that point.
Yeah.
No, there's, and if it's a repeat customer, yeah, we are writing tickets.
Repeat customer.
I like repeat customers.
I just be concerned that I'm not so sure that not selling them here is gonna alleviate the fact that people are gonna light off fireworks in their backyard.
It's not. I'm trying to lessen them a little bit. And I've made promises to people that are affected by this in the past, saying that I would do everything I could within my powers, and that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I understand.
Is everybody okay with just keeping this on the agenda for next meeting? Is that, then we can kind of think it over and talk to people ourselves, too?
Point of order, would this be for just discussion next time, or would we bring forward a...
We have two weeks. I mean, we could do a discuss and consider at that point, and I'm guessing the direction, if we're gonna do something, would be then to go to ordinance committee with it, so...
Well, the next meeting, well, that's...
The lame-dog meeting.
Oh, yeah. So, we have actually a month. We could put it out for a month, put it on the table for a month. I mean...
Why can't we do a next meeting?
Well, you can. You can do it anytime.
I mean, does that give you enough time, Chief, to, and you?
I mean, if you guys can let me know what you guys need from me, I can leave you my business card and go from there. It's really up to you guys in the long sense. I mean, you've gotta tell me what I need to do, and I wanna make sure Dominic, I get my tent in place.
Yeah. I mean, if it makes sense, I'm just curious why we delayed it, you know? I mean, if it makes sense to the, I'm just curious why we delay it, you know?
It was just because technically it's what they call a lame duck meeting, you know, after the election, before new people come in, if there's new people or whatever. I mean, but we could do it a month out. That would be.
May second.
May second?
I mean, it's sort of better for me to just make sure that.
May seventh.
Get all my stuff ordered and everything, but.
If, if we were going to do it on May second, do you want us to bring example language or?
Unless we got a different one.
I think Lee wants that we can have a place for a discuss and consider.
May seventh.
Oh, okay, you're right.
Is that, should we do it May seventh?
No, actually, that's, that's the first scheduled meeting.
In May? Okay.
So Lee's asking what staff needs to prepare.
I guess if you're going to have, we'd probably have to get ordinances, again, we typically look at other communities, see what they have for ordinances. Probably communities nearby, not far away. Let the chief have some input. If he's got experienced places, he's been with what the ordinance should read and it just, I want, if it's going to be for the sale of it, then, you know, you obviously got to go after the possession of it too and.
You're never going to, after the possession, you're not to go completely after the sale.
Yeah.
You can look at different areas and it'll give you.
If we're going to have an ordinance, I just wanted something that's enforceable, that is practical, I guess.
One of, one of the items brought up last meeting that I, I don't see it on this agenda is, you know, something that we're going to have to consider is if we're going to continue with an ordinance review committee.
Right. We have not met it in a long time.
So, you know, if we're looking for a new ordinance, and it is discuss and consider, I mean, we're probably not going to have an ordinance committee meeting before then. So the board's going to take that into account, correct?
Right.
I mean, which generally ordinances are just going to whatever committee makes the most sense. So in this case it'd be.
Law enforcement committee.
Yeah, law enforcement. That's where it went, but there's, was a quorum issue the last couple.
Yeah, so I mean, in this case, it could go to back to law enforcement at next month and then come here. And that would give us time to, to do that. Does that make sense?
That, that would be, I, I like the idea. I mean, the law enforcement committee could bring forward what the law enforcement committee would like us to look at as an ordinance. And then we can consider it, modify it or.
Lee, if you have any information, I mean, I could get it to law enforcement.
I'll share with chief.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Do you guys need anything from me right away?
No, as long as we have your contact information.
I'll throw it out to my truck at the end of the meeting and guide you guys a couple of business cards to go from there. I do appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Parks, Recreation and Forestry item may is discuss and consider suspending ordinance two, three, zero, dash, two stating pets, including animals of any species, shall not be permitted in village parks, except animals used to aid individuals with disabilities or as otherwise recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee and approved by village board. And I'll let Parks and Rec talk about this.
Yeah, this is Zoo Sort. Um, and they're a wildlife company specializing in entertainment and education wildlife shows. They're hopefully going to be coming to the village in conjunction with Bookmobile. Those could be a licensed animal exhibitor showing seven animals for about a forty-five minute program. So we're looking for an exemption to our ordinance about animals in parks. Some of the animals, you've got a list here of possible animals, kukubara, bearded dragon, giant gecko, python, hissing roaches, that kind of thing. So nothing huge, but with a licensed animal handler and the kids love it, so they have a lot of fun. So that's why we're looking for this exemption from the board.
North Lawn Park is the one by Taylor Prairie. Is that the one you?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments, questions on this?
Did I miss anything?
This is kind of a technical issue, but I think if we approve the, uh, if we approve the ordinance as stated or the, or the suspension of it, it would allow any pets to be in the park for that period of time. So I would recommend that we add some language to this, to state that we're suspending the ordinance two thirty-two from twelve PM to four PM on July eighteenth at North Lawn Park with regard to exhibition of wildlife for entertainment and educational purposes so that folks can't just bring their dogs that day and also be using the park.
Sounds good.
Any thoughts? I mean, I'm fine with that.
No, I think that's, that's a good idea.
Okay.
I don't want to duly pipe.
So I'll make the motion that we, that we do that, that we add the language to the end of that first sentence there to state with regard to exhibition of wildlife for entertainment and educational purposes.
I'll second that.
Motion in second with the additional language. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Fireman's Park Playground, it's middle, it's in the packet. I don't think that the pictures of it, should I put it up there?
You try it or maybe Sean got.
Oh, perfect. Sean is on it. Perfect, thank you. So we're looking for approval to spend the money that's budgeted, plus a little bit extra so that we can be ADA compliant. What you see there is something that hopefully we're going to be putting in Fireman's Park. The blue portion, if I'm correct, Sean, is the port in place part.
That is correct.
And that would allow for ADA access. What you're seeing there at the very bottom, that, that white strip, there is a sidewalk that leads from Clark Street that would allow somebody from parking in that parking lot by Park Street to go up to the playground without having to go on grass and then use the port in place to be able to go up on the playground equipment, making it ADA compliant. We had budgeted forty-five thousand dollars for the playground equipment and the swing and just a normal surrounding of it. But it's going to cost a little bit more. That's why we're asking for, instead of forty-five thousand dollars that was budgeted, we're asking for the fifty-nine thou, up to fifty-nine thousand dollars. Hopefully Sean will do a own deal and get us a better deal, right? But at the most fifty-nine thousand dollars for that playground equipment. We, what, what does our budget look like right now, Sean? How much do we have in that budget?
Park development, prior to this, we have a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars.
And then the upcoming projects?
The, the next thing that's scheduled would be a community park playground replacement in twenty twenty-one, I believe.
So we have that money set aside. It doesn't affect the levy. We're just asking for fifty-nine thousand instead of fourteen thousand dollars that was budgeted. The difference being the ADA compliance aspect. In, in the parks meeting, we went back and forth, you know, we, you can see that, we've got a very modern looking swing set there. We do have a very old thirty-year-old swing set right now that isn't the three-post type, it's the six-post type that is, you know, just much more cumbersome and it'll. We thought about just replacing the, the playground equipment and leaving the swing, but I think it would just, it would just, it's doing half the job and it would look, it's like, you know, putting in an attachment to an old house, you know, it's going to, yeah. So that's why we're looking to do the whole thing. It only would save about forty-five hundred dollars.
The blue pad, is that concrete or is that that material that's like a track or?
It's like a foam, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Wheelchair accessible.
Yeah, so if the kids fall on it, it's not actually concrete.
Correct, yes.
Are there any funds in the park budget that could be shifted towards this to offset that higher cost a little bit?
No.
Well, we've got, we've got it in the budget. We've got the money set aside, that hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
But, but now we're stealing some of that money that's supposed to be used in twenty twenty-one for the other park though, right? Now, we might be underfunded at that point.
Well, I don't know about underfunded. I mean, it would just depend on how much money we wanted to spend on the next playground. And we're also going to have some monies coming in to offset some of that too with, you know, different subdivisions that say, uh, Parkland Ridge, where we're not taking park, uh, park land in the first phase. So we'll get money coming in for that or even.
Shady Grove, Shady Grove.
Shady Grove.
Although that's a little, there's some trade-offs there too, so.
How long does that padding last?
Forever, virtually. There's, there's playgrounds currently now that are twenty to twenty-five years or old or older that have this, the port in place. So it, it's virtually indestructible. It can be cut and, but they have patch kits and things that you can fix that with. And just for example, if we wanted to do the, the whole playground in that, so it's a, it's a forty-five by thirty-six area, we would add another forty-five, the, the playground itself is forty-five, we would add another forty-five thousand in surface. So it's, it's really expensive. Sean, who puts the plaything together? You. Then that's going to be a long time. Whomever we, whoever we purchase it from. Whatever company we purchase it from. Okay. Yep. Having been involved in these, in other places where you get volunteers who decide to put it together and trying to write that up is always.
Three parks.
Yeah, right. If you're going to invest in this, I think you want them putting it together for warranty's sake and that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
I mean, I think that's a, it's a very busy, heavily used park, and I think it's going to be a nice, nice addition to that park.
I'm, does anybody have any question? Matt?
I, I really appreciate the, the Parks Department and the Parks Committee looking at this and wanting to go forward with, with making, with making this park ADA compliant or at least have an ADA access into this park, which we know we have a real issue throughout the village where we have, we have a lot of, of areas in our parks that, that you cannot access if you're someone that needs that type of access. So I really appreciate you folks moving forward with this.
Thank you.
When we put this in, are we going to address the parking for the ADA parking? Because I think right now it's painted where the basketball court is, so it's really not ideal.
So that includes repainting some handicap stalls?
That's stuff that we can do in-house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get it, if we're going to, you know, create space like this, then not have a space for someone to park adequately, that would be silly. But I'm sure you're already on top of it, all right?
Anything else?
I made the motion to approve the, up to fifty-nine thousand dollars for the park and Fireman's Park, for the playground equipment in Fireman's Park. And with the addition of the, not only the playground, but the swing set and the ported place for ADA compliance.
One second.
You have a motion in the second. Any other discussion?
It's just that that money's going to come from the park development fund and not the general.
Motion in second, okay with that? All right, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Just, we haven't decided on exactly which playground's going in yet, so I really like this one, but it goes up and not out. So we, we still haven't, we still waiting on some other bits, but.
Okay, we're not going to hold you to that one.
What's that?
Right, exactly.
You won't need architectural approval.
I just want to make one comment. Sean, our five-thirty class is basically close to capacity, so you're doing a good job.
Yeah.
Good.
Awesome.
All right, report to some village offices. Troy?
Uh, I would just encourage everyone to get out and vote tomorrow.
Okay.
No, nothing to report.
James?
No report.
Jeff?
No, no reports.
Okay, John Russell?
Just one comment, a reminder, I mentioned at last meeting that, um, for the utility commission, we're going to need a replacement for Dave Wallace, citizen member. This will be his last, this will be his last one, so.
Okay.
And then I did see in the last meeting minutes that we were working on a, a date on April thirtieth, a meeting with the town. Is that confirmed yet?
Yeah, that's actually in our minutes that we voted on that date. I think the time is the only thing that is not, because you have a meeting here for landfill.
It's landfill, we can adjust that. It's like a five minute, we can either do before or after.
So we could still hold it at six-thirty or?
I think it said seven in the minutes, but I just wanted to confirm for planning purposes.
Yeah, I think the date was voted on as April thirty. We'll just nail down a time.
And we were meeting here, correct?
Correct. Matt, as far as that, do I just send a email to Chris Hampton and tell him this is what we'd like to meet?
Yeah. Okay. Oliver, you want to make contact, yeah?
All right.
And we'll have it recorded here.
Sure.
Andrew, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess we just have to let staff know if you want anyone, staff here.
Probably seven, yeah, because they have a meeting for something else here, but they can adjust that as well.
Well, it's landfill and.
Yeah, I don't want to take long.
Five minutes, it's a.
They're going to do, right? Do it at six-thirty instead of five minutes late.
That should be, convince them to meet here.
Okay. Okay, John?
No.
Anything? Okay. Um, under my name, I have the appointment of citizen member to utility commission. And I'm blanking on the name, but do we have anybody else or we're just looking for one for Dave Wallace, that's right? Okay. All right, and so I will make sure we get one for next meeting because I don't have that in tonight. And then also, like I said, we are meeting with the town on April thirtieth. Uh, Lee Boucher.
No report.
Matt?
I always think we can continue to try to do a better job of getting, you know, information out there of all the good things that, um, the village and, and staff are working on, you know, through social media or, or website. And then I've, I've asked staff to, you know, try to also brag about some of these things. And Sean and JJ went to discuss the Parks and Rec Department and public works, the good things going on there at Chamber. And Aaron and I will be going to do a economic development one here in the coming months. So thanks to you guys for doing that. Huh?
Got some pizza.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, did Aaron have anything he wanted to relate?
I don't think so.
Okay. Chief Labor, anything else?
Uh, yeah, another ordinance related issue. Uh, we do not have an ordinance prohibiting people from letting their dogs run at large. Basically, you can take your dog down the sidewalk and not have it on a leash in the village. So that is something I brought up today and Lee and Matt encouraged me to bring this up to you folks and try to get some direction on what you want done here, but I can't think of another community that doesn't have a leash law. We may be one of the few in Dean County that doesn't. And generally it's, it specifies that when you're off your property with your dog, it's on a leash. And they specify the length of the leash also. So that's what I am proposing and want some direction on. We've had two dog bites already this year and both of them were off leash. And we had a complaint from a gentleman with his several small children in his yard today that a guy with a pit bull, and I'm not casting aspersions on pit bulls here, but he had the dog off leash running right by his little children down the sidewalk. So that's, that's a concern I have and, and we would like to make sure that we have responsible pet owners in the village. And I don't know anybody that can control their dog off leash all the time. It's impossible.
Right, no matter how well-trained your. Okay.
Even Lars runs away from time to time.
At the only time I was bit by a dog in the village, it was on a leash though.
Well, there you go, never mind.
So is that a future agenda item then?
Yeah, put that on the future agenda as well. Okay, uh, JJ, anything? Sean, JJ? One question I had, as long as you're here, JJ, somebody had asked me about, is there still compost available or what is the story?
We'll be setting ours up later this week. We had to wait basically for Dane County to start taking it because if we get full on one of these warm days, we'd have nowhere to take it. So we were at the mercy of Dane County now, depending on what's coming tonight, tomorrow, we'll be setting it up later this week.
Okay. Thank you.
And then brush pickup was first one to be.
Next?
It's this week, yeah.
I think it is. I'm just, for a reminder, since we're on.
Saw some out by the curb, so, all right. Okay, moving on, communications and miscellaneous business, just consider approval of vouchers. Any comments, questions, corrections on vouchers? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the village portion of vouchers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion in second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Correspondence, I have nothing official, just some typical mail, I guess. Future agenda items, we talked about fireworks, ordinance, talking about that and the leash law and anything else?
Building inspection.
Building inspection contract for Tom and as well as the other people. Anything else?
Do we want to have a discussion of board before the joint town meeting or just go with the topics that we have?
Uh, we probably should put that on the agenda just as far as what we, is what we want to address with the upcoming joint town, village meeting. And I mean, I think everybody has a copy of what the town person, people have said they want to look at and see if we have to add anything to it. And I'm going to also ask them for more information on a background of those subjects that they want. So we have, kind of like we have the agenda item in the packet, there's information behind it. Anything else for future agenda? If not, that brings us down to item eleven.
Motion adjourned?
Seconded.
Motion in second to adjourn, non-debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're adjourned, thank you.